Thirty second deficit.
All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order at six oh one PM, May nineteenth, Board of Education and Met Meeting. Uh, roll call, Ben.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Brittany.
Here.
John.
Here.
And Brad, myself, are all here. Announcements, uh, we have next committee as a whole on June second, and the regular, next regular board meeting is June sixteenth. Uh, approval of meeting agenda, before we approve, I would like to move item H, under number five, to the A position. Is everybody okay with that? Yep. I need a formal action to do that, too.
Um, motion mode, uh, item number requested.
Second.
Oh, you beat me.
Was it?
Scott.
Scott.
This. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so, now can I have an approval of the meeting agenda? Motion.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
I need an ap- motion to approve April twenty eighth's meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on. Approval of expenditures.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on it? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, treasurer's report.
Beginning balance was nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twelve cents. Total deposits was one hundred, six thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. We had total expenses of five hundred fifty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-three cents, for impending balance of five hundred, twenty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents.
And the local government pool is two million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred thirteen dollars and twenty-seven cents. Now get our motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, student council, anything there? Committee as a whole, the meeting minutes are there if you wanted to look at them or go over them. Eagles Wing's charter school update.
We don't have anything to add there. Uh, their meeting was postponed until tonight because of lack of forum. The only thing that was, that was completed as far as motions were the capping of the children's house to ten per grade level, so five K, four K and five K, um, capping at ten each at this point, uh, with further discussion later on. Just as far as what, what future grades are gonna look like.
Athletic report.
Think the biggest thing of note there is softball, playoffs start next week, um, and Solon Spring, the Solon Springs-Northwood co-op is seated very high, so.
So track and field championships today?
That is correct.
Principals report.
Um, yes, so a few weeks ago, um, a group of us and CISA twelve met to further discuss, um, and identify, um, some academic goals and behavior goals as a district, um, for EMLSS, which is that equitable, multi-level systems of supports. Um, so we're kinda still in the process of defining those next steps, those action steps for next year. Um, one of the areas that we identified was our, um, tier-two interventions for both of those areas and kinda solidifying, um, that information more for our staff as a whole. PLC, our next steps, our, our overall PLC group that meets monthly, um, are looking into that next step of introducing, um, universal design for learning, so that kinda coincides with our, um, identification of our essential standards, um, that we're currently doing in our ELA and in this upcoming year in our math standards. So still plugging along, um, in that direction as well. Lot of great information, provides that opportunity, um, for all of our staff to be heard at the higher, um, bigger group of PLC, and so just kinda disseminating some of that information from the top down and from the bottom up of how that information is going vertically. Um, so a lot of great conversation. Our Eagles Academy had their showcase last week, was very successful, a lot of great turnout, um, a lot of great projects that the students, um, presented as well. Um, next slide, just some upcoming events and upcoming work that we're still continuing. Graduation is this weekend, so just getting those, you know, those few things, um, tidied up and ready to go. Um, again, have another great team that's been working on that, those graduation, um, items as well, so very thankful of having people stepping up. And then our Montessori crossover program, that's June third.
What is that?
Um, so that is. Yeah.
So it's.
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Or, or they're departing from E two.
It's kinda preparing them for the next year then.
That's correct.
Okay.
Um, we have our last round of PBIS assemblies, um, for this month into June, and then our summer school sessions are gonna be starting up in June. And then just continuing that work on our schedules, hopefully to, we'll get our elementary one finalized here soon. Um, just had some feedback from staff members, and then, um, we'll also be doing another academic data dig during our in-service in June, uh, to follow up on the previous one we did in December and kinda see where those deficits are, um, going into next year, and where to focus our efforts.
Thank you. Superintendent report.
All right, a lot of great, wonderful, engaging information. Um, federal funding, uh, there's been a lot of, uh, discussion about federal funding, especially from the DPI. One thing that, that they're, that, that they really prefaced with, with superintendents is the, the title funds. Um, the state is going to get less, uh, this coming year, sort of because demographics have switched or changed nationally, and, um, we're, we're not as low as we used to be apparently as far as, uh, you know, the poverty rates and whatnot, so they're shifting title funds, so just know that that's something to expect. I don't know what that means per district though, so we'll find out more later on here. Next one is the, the state legislation, uh, just a few different things that we're talking about, special education funding. Yeah, there, there was some concern that there are some legislators that are trying to, trying to bait people into looking at high-cost special education versus just special education and the, and the Medicaid reimbursement. And what I have there, when we're talking about high-cost special education, it's students that, um, their, their cost of services is above thirty thousand dollars. We don't have any students in that versus, um, reimbursement rate across the board and, and switching that reimbursement rate, we, we would see a benefit, so, um, so there's concern that, um, a- as, as legislators are talking to, um, you know, constituents and us, making sure that we're, we're understanding what high-cost special education is versus special education reimbursement and that Medicaid reimbursement, so. Uh, next one is talking about that per pupil aid. Uh, I know that it was put in the budget, um, from Governor Evers that we would see an increase of three, three hundred and thirty-four dollars per child or per pupil, uh, this coming year, and then three forty-five the following year. Um, that is not looking great as far as getting support and traction, so, we'll, we'll see where that goes, and, and a lot of this is just playing out from politics, uh, with Governor Evers and, and doing his line item veto a couple of years ago, switching the numbers, so it was a four hundred and two, um, year increase, which.
To twenty-four, twenty-five or something like that?
That's correct, yeah, and, and taking out some numbers in the dash and making it, yeah. So that, that upset the apple cart, uh, in Madison, so we'll see where, where things lay out as far as per pupil aid is concerned. And then, um, the, the last one is, is this, um, option to rehire retired educators. Uh, the big conundrum that we've always had is people don't necessarily wanna come back after they retire because they would have to put their retirement on hold, and what they're looking at is, is suspending that, uh, requirement, so people could get rehired on a full-time basis because you have to maintain, what is it, under eight hundred and?
Eight hundred and eighty hours.
Eight hundred and eighty hours per year, so you can keep your benefits, but with this legislation, it would take away that requirement, and people could, um, be rehired on a full-time basis, but not pay into their retirement, if that makes sense.
Would they still be collecting their?
That is correct. That's, that's part of that, so.
Basically double dipping.
Well, they would not, we would not be required to add to their.
Add to the.
Oh, okay, add to retirement.
So they wouldn't be getting more.
Right.
It's just they would be hired full-time and still maintain their retirement benefits at that point, so. Anyway, uh, we'll see where that goes.
That's kinda what we had to fight with, Frank. That's why we're only part-time and killing.
Yeah, and, and we, we do have someone on staff that falls within that as well, so, anyway. Next one, board retreat, so, um, I know there was some discussion of it, but we have not placed anything on the calendar. I wanna make sure we have a discussion in June, if that's okay?
Yep.
So we can get that laid on. And then, last but not least, request for proposals. Uh, last month we passed, or the, the board passed, uh, the request for proposals, these went out, and I've gotten, um, things scheduled with Carl Sanderson and Myra next week. Uh, I did talk to CISA ten, um, uh, today, we'll see where that goes, and then I'm expecting Mark and Johnson, uh, to respond as well, so.
How does CISA ten play into this?
They do that kinda thing.
They, that is one of their specialties, is, uh, general contracting and, and project management.
Okay.
So, um, in, in a, in a previous gig, that's, that's who managed the project, so.
And they may yet put in a proposal, or?
I, I would anticipate that they will, so.
All right, all done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This time we'll do public comment. Uh, I have one, Tammy, do you wish to speak?
Yeah, but we didn't go over the rules. I think you wanted to.
Yep. Yeah, they're on the back of the sheet, I'll have to read them to. Uh, let's see. Public comment shall be permitted as indicated on the order of business before the board takes official action on any issue of substance at the discretion of presiding officer. Anyone having a legitimate interest and action of the board may comment during the public portion of the meeting. Attendees must register their intention to comment in the public portion of the meeting upon arrival at the meeting. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and will be requested to preface their comments by an announcement of their name, address, group affiliation, if and when appropriate. Each statement made by participant shall be limited to three minutes of duration. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic unless all others wish to speak, have spoken, have been heard. Uh, participants will direct all comments to the board and not staff or other participants. Participants shall address only topics within the legitimate jurisdiction of the board. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question the board members individually. I, as an officer, have opposite, uh, things I could do. I can interrupt, warn, terminate participation, can ask individuals to leave, request assistance from law enforcement if necessary, call recess or adjournment, um, and waive rules with the approval of board when necessary for protection of privacy or administration of board's business. Uh, this portion of the machine, the meeting, a public comment will be limited to twenty minutes unless extended by a vote of the board. Okay?
Okay. Um, so.
Yep, go ahead. She's gonna start the timer.
The seat of honor.
The seat of honor.
And would you like a piece of candy?
Oh, no, thank you.
It's one of the perks.
So I'm just gonna read the letter that I handed out at the last meeting, um, at this time we have twelve pair, pair of professionals at Solon. Eleven of those pairs are women. We make the same amount of money. The twelfth pair is a man who's on a teacher's salary, but has the title of paraprofessional, just like the eleven women pairs. This is discrimination. I have surmised that it is a contractual issue, but as I see it, if the contract was signed with the assumption that he would be responsible for the requirements in the contract and was able to unwilling or those responsibilities were not offered, then the contract should be null and void. And there is a breach of contract. A new contract should have been offered and signed, but instead this pair has been compensated for a job he is no longer doing. This has gone on for the entire school year, with the eleven women who do exactly what their contracts asked them to do are completing those duties and more, much more. If the precedent has been set, then we should all be getting what that twelfth person is getting on his paycheck. Fair is fair, equal should be equal. This inequity and sexism is so blatant that we just can't accept it, we shouldn't accept it either. It's time to right a wrong. This wrong has been going on for far too long, and we have, we have attempted to correct it in the past with no results. If this is a former administrative issue, then fix it. If it's a contract, contract issue, sign a new one. But as it sits, we, the other eleven, are being slighted in many ways. We want to be treated equally and have transparency when we ask hard questions. Two years ago, there was a petition signed by most everyone in the district, and we also just signed another one last week. This petition requested, or two weeks ago, a two dollar an hour pay raise for all paraprofessionals. We are once again asking for that raise. At this point, we make less than seventeen dollars an hour. Solon has the lowest pay per, paraprofessionals in the area. I will say, most of us are obviously not here for the money. We have, we love our jobs, the kids and most everything that goes with it, but you have set that salary higher than any of us eleven are at, and that is discrimination and unequal in our workplace. When we can't get additional help because no one applies for paraprofessional openings due to the low pay, it's time to take a closer look at the numbers. I did not intend on making this about wages. I raised the issue because of the inequity. But after talking with all of the female paraprofessionals, we realized it is also about the bottom line. If you compensate one, you must compensate for all. Again, we will only accept equality. I implore you of this time to take a collective breath and weigh this out. I am currently not doing this for myself, as I won't be here too much longer. I'm doing this for the future of our school. We need to offer more for this very skilled position, so that we maintain the quality of paraprofessionals that we currently have. Think about the school, the community, and most importantly, our students who deserve a quality education. I'm truly worried about the future, what the future holds for Solon Springs School if we don't get quality paraprofessional candidates. We have a paraprofessional that changes poopy pants for a, a student, and she gets paid the same as I get paid. Another, the, the person that I'm talking about gets paid thousands of dollars more than her, and he refuses to do it. You know, it, it just, if, if it, if it was a matter of him being a teacher before, he's not anymore, and the contract should have been done and over with. If not, then we should all get what he's getting, because we're doing more than what he's doing.
Thank you for your statement. All right, moving on, we are going to now discuss support staff salary. Kinda went over this in the thing. You have the documents there, first year, second to sixth year, seventh to fourteenth and fifteen-plus years.
Would you help me with some math? That, this recommendation, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, support staff's salary schedule, is there an increase from last year to this year, and what, if so?
Yeah, it was three percent on each cell.
Okay.
And last year, we didn't have lanes previously, like, for years. We used to years ago, but we implemented the lanes again last year, so that there was, um, some adjustment in wages based on years of service.
Uh, are you able to anticipate, uh, we're still a month and a half from the end of our fiscal year, are you able to anticipate if we're gonna end in the black or a deficit yet?
I have not gotten to that this year, was my plan to, but I did not get to it before the meeting. But I did send you guys some documents showing some projections with, with next year with the changes to. So I did a rest, uh, estimated revenue limit, and because our average number of students is going down, we're looking at getting less funding for twenty-five, twenty-six than we did this year.
If you don't wanna answer this, I, I understand, 'cause I'm, I, so next year's budget, are we anticipating a deficit?
I would say.
That's, that's a.
For me, looking at, at what we had for a possible overage this year, was very small, and looking at that sheet I had given all of you guys with what the raises and increased insurance and all of that, what, how much those costs will go up, and then with our revenue limit going down, it's very likely that we'll be going in the fall next year, unless we, you know, can change some other things around.
Sure.
And it's hard to say, just based on what about that funding picture's gonna be.
Yeah, I understand. That's why I'm not trying to paint you into a corner. The finance for school is confusing, and so this trying to put this decision in a larger context, if we're ending with a four hundred thousand dollar surplus, that would change a decision, but it doesn't sound like we're gonna end with any surplus.
Well, and the thing is to remember that it's, it doesn't only affect next year, it affects every year going forward. So it's not like a one-time raise, because that amount stays increased every year, so then the percentages or whatever is the increases are, are raises for following years is already added. If it's a percentage, it's added, you know, onto a higher dollar amount, so that affects that way, too.
Pete, have you calculated, or Leanne, or? This is the second time in, what, two years, that there's been a recommendation for two dollar an hour pay raise. But FICA retirement, twelve, like, what's that, what would that number be?
I.
Did I miss, did you send that to me and I missed it?
Yes, I sent everybody out a.
I'm sorry.
An attachment that had that information on it, looking at if we left it at what, what we currently have projected, and then if we did a smaller percentage or increase.
For past year.
That would be what the total, and then the total would be, um, health insurance increase, the increase in, you know, how that would increase our FICA and our, um, our retirement. I didn't calculate the life insurance and, uh, long-term disability, how much that would affect that, 'cause part of that's based on, on age, and that's harder to predict out. So I'm trying to think of what it was with everything. Let's see.
Do we have a lot of people that follow in that seven to fifteen-plus-year service range?
It's increasing. The majority of them are in that one to five, and six to seven, six to.
Two to six, but we've got.
Or two to six, I should say.
Got a few more that, when we changed last year, there, that went into that seven to fourteen. And that's, I did, um, do a document, too, that showed where wages were at for like the last four years, and how some of them increased when we put them into the, um, when we did the, the lane, what the increase was in addition to the raise for that. I'm just trying to think if I can share those again.
I'm on it right now. The partial ra- the raise that we discussed last time, so three percent plus what we were asking adding. You can see those numbers, did you get the?
Yeah, I am.
So.
I'm just sorry, I wanna let Leanne look into this. So there's the tabs on the bottom, there's.
We added that to all support staff?
No.
No. Okay, oh yeah, I see the, I see the ones now, yep.
There it is.
I think I did have a sheet that also had that, but when I did this one on Friday, I just did that portion.
That one, is, is there a separate page for support staff?
If you.
It's on the bottom tab.
There's three tabs, so if you, even if you look at the estimated, at least that one, yeah, it's more important.
Turn it sexy. Yeah, not many people give that. Second lane.
Yeah, so you're looking at, without any adjustments, around a hundred and eighty-three, almost a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollar increase to our budget, just for where we're at now.
Thank you.
Well, it's always the largest part of the budget.
Right.
Then you all have the comparable wages across the board here. Looking at the ones within our district, Ashland's only at thirteen dollars.
Thirteen eighty-six. That, that was previous information, uh, talking to the superintendent there, there was a fair amount of increase that they've projected there, so.
Okay, I need to know if anybody wants to take action on this at all?
So can we drop, uh, could, does the raise have to be across, if we did a raise, does it have to be across every lane, or can target certain, I mean, the first lane is one year, so.
If you, I think if you try and put that on certain lanes, you try to build that, um, that formula into, so there's kind of a similar percentage be in between lanes when you start. that formula into, so there's kind of a similar percentage in between lanes when you start adjusting one lane over another lane.
Then yeah, your lanes get autographed.
Does that, does that make sense?
So probably have to go across all three.
The other, well, you, you can choose whatever you wish on that. I would say you would wanna have some, some increase across there, but you could change up that, what that table looks like.
Right. Yeah, cuz that's a bit of a jump at fifteen. Maybe you could add it to the first three lanes. Leave the fourth lane alone.
I think there's only like one person in the fourth lane.
There is.
So it's not. I mean, if you need me to try and fill more information together, I can.
What's the consensus of the group? Uh, you wanna take action, you wanna table it?
It's like closing our eyes and throwing darts without having a sense of what the budget's gonna be, which I understand is the way public education government works, but if we wait, by waiting on, to the next meeting, does it give us more possibility of better budget information? It might not.
I, I don't think it does, yes.
No, we don't usually see the budget though.
We haven't run a deficit in past years, so.
I agree, John, I'm saying.
We haven't run a deficit in the past four or five years, so I mean, I, I don't know why we suddenly would next year, I don't.
That was since we passed the referendum, but that, those amounts.
Yeah. That's why we passed it, I assume.
But those amounts that we've come out of had have gotten smaller every year. So that's not going to, that's not going to.
I, I, I guess I thought I heard say the declining enrollment is what?
Yeah.
Is gonna affect us next year in terms of that, our, our revenue?
That would be one factor. I mean, there's other expenditures we lay out that we can control.
True.
That's correct.
But yeah, salary is always gonna be the biggest part of our budget. So I, I mean, we probably should decide tonight whether we're gonna do this or not, do this, or I don't know if we're gaining anything. Clear the picture next month, the month after.
So I would need a motion, if you want to, of what it is.
John, do you have an idea?
Well, I mean, we talked about some amounts last, but I would pick like a dollar an hour. If someone wants to go less or make your pitch, I, I I think, uh, wage raise is warranted. I mean, again, you know, the hourly salary is one piece of the picture. Cuz the district already does all have a pretty good outlay for health, insurance, all the other benefits that go along with that.
And we haven't had to lay off anybody. Where other districts have.
And I think that still keeps us in the, in the same arena as other districts, other than Bayfield. I don't know why they're, they might have.
They got special. They got special funding there.
That's, take out Bayfield, we're higher than some, lower than a couple others, so.
No, we're certainly not the, not the lowest nor the highest.
No, right, right.
But that's also with pretty much all of our wages throughout the building.
And these are full-time benefits, are, are, are.
Yeah, the, the one letter, the one letter saying that thirty-five hours is a full-time, it is full-time, benefits are available.
Those who choose to take them.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that is a perk that it's a over the course of a whole year. They're getting full-time benefit, they get the benefits in the summer, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's a pretty good deal.
Yeah, and the, and the wages aren't the same across the board anymore based on because of the lanes, there's some differences there.
Okay, well, I would need a motion. And if you wanna do all three lane, all four lanes, three lanes, two lanes, one lane, what?
No, those projections was with seventy-five cents.
Yeah. So you're adding twenty-five cents to that, but, yep.
Do you think aid, do you just, is that like one group or like I see Cook one and Cook two? Like, is there an opportunity for an aid and a aid one and aid two? Or?
That gets, I think that gets a little tricky.
Right.
Yeah, cuz we did talk about if you needed a certificate to do your aiding position.
Right.
Meaning a certificate position or something?
Well, it's, it is. Either you have Montessori and it's Montessori, Montessori certification, or it's special education, it's special education license, so.
Yeah.
Absent anybody else, I'll make a motion to raise it, uh, per as a dollar an hour across. I mean, I don't think we have a lot on either end of the fifteen or one year, so I don't think that's gonna make a huge difference. So might as well make it across all lanes.
Is that plus the three percent?
Plus the three percent. I mean, that's already baked in there, so.
Do we have a second?
I wanted, I would love to see the cost of that. Like, what's that mean in numbers?
Well, on behalf of what the projection was for two.
Okay, it wasn't. Or what?
I did.
You did the two dollar one?
Yeah, I did it on two.
The one, the projection I did was on seventy-five cents. So that was for the, um, and that included social security and WRS.
And that would add what to the budget at seventy-five cents?
It's in your chart. So seventy-five cents increase would add forty-eight thousand in social security and WRS. Excuse me, would add forty-eight thousand. No, would bring.
Well, with a three percent, it looks like fifty-four.
Would bring the raise it up to forty-eight thousand. So that would be an increase of sixteen thousand. And then it would add around, around two thousand for, um, WRS and social security. And then that puts that base up higher for the following years. So you have to figure that in, you know, kind of projecting for the future, that added to the cells with whatever increases we do in the future. So around, it would be over twenty thousand dollar increase, I don't know if I can.
Yeah, it looks like, right now with a, with a seventy-five cent, it looks like about seventeen thousand over not doing it and just doing the three percent. So it's probably gonna be around the twenty to, between twenty and twenty-three thousand.
So the one dollar pay raise would add twenty-three thousand dollars to the budget.
Do.
Right around there.
I put an estimated difference on what.
You showed just the three percent and then with the.
I was looking at the revenue, um. I was thinking I put a total on there and what, what we'd be looking at going down.
Yeah, so before we discuss anymore, we should really have a second.
That's what I'm trying to work towards.
I know, but you're, you're not supposed to discuss.
Yeah, it doesn't pass the motion, it just.
Okay.
It doesn't pass until we vote, but there has to be a second in order technically to discuss.
So is the motion died?
Until it's rescinded.
How does that happen?
It's not.
That's a little confusing. So somebody has to second it for you guys to be able to discuss it.
Yeah, that doesn't mean.
I, I understand that, of course. When can we resume our discussion then?
As soon as someone says second.
And then.
And then it goes to.
So the meeting just stalls until?
Or unless it gets rescinded.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, how does it get rescinded?
John would have to rescind it.
Or if no one seconds it, doesn't it kind of drop?
At some point.
It's never passed until after the vote, so.
So even after that second, when there's a discussion that, that motion can be rescinded.
Or defeated on a, on a vote.
That's right. Okay, no seconds? All right, we are gonna move on then. Motion has been defeated. All right, so we have no person. Do you wanna table it to June?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll put it on the agenda for June.
Let me know if there's any other information you want me to put together or if you want me to send you out any of those.
I guess they just want to figure what the dollar versus seventy-five. Okay, personnel recommendations, there's none. Considerance of donations, none. Summer coaching contracts, none.
Yeah, the, the summer coaching contact, uh, just an update.
Oh, that's a contact, oh, sorry.
So that's being worked out by coaches and that, so.
They are, okay. What are they, till we know, I, I just, I just gotta make sure they, they conflict.
Right, and that's, that's what they're working through is that piece, so.
Uh, and then I'm wondering too, and, and, and maybe, you know, we can leave this to the athletic director to work out. But I know he expressed a concern that it starts, the contact period starts June first while we're still doing. So I would think as a matter of common courtesy, the other coaches will lay off until seasons are wrapped up.
Right, and that was part of the discussion as well, so.
Okay, middle school music requirement?
Uh, requirement, yeah.
A requirement, sorry.
Oh, yeah, please, please, don't.
I'm sorry, I've had a long day.
So. So with the, the middle school music retirement, unless there is a vote, a vote to make that a requirement for all students, um, we have another plan that will not require for all students, so.
What?
And this would be involving Julie Fromm and some other offering that we can have there, so.
Okay.
So then they have, this plan would go into effect if we don't make this a requirement or that would be proposed?
That's, that's, that, that's what would happen, because what was brought up was making a requirement.
Right.
And if, if that is not the decision of the board, then we will have other.
I would like to try the other way instead of making a requirement, honestly. I hate to require people to do things.
Okay, that, and that.
I can take math, social studies, history.
Well. I understand that too, but.
Can, can we put this in formal, please?
Yeah, I can.
What, do you need a motion to not require it?
Yes, that is correct. Either way, just so it's.
Either to require or not to require.
Check. So it's a formalized piece.
We've discussed a lot of this.
Yeah, I apologize. I'll let you make the motion in a minute.
I don't know if I can make a motion.
You can.
Well, I'll make, I'll make the motion and I'm perfectly happy to make it subject to vote, which it would be anyway. But I'll make the motion to make it a requirement in middle school.
Make it a requirement?
Yes.
Let me just. I'm, I'm a second.
Okay, now, does anybody want to discuss it? I'm not a huge fan of requiring certain things, but you know, I, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna die on it either cuz I think it'll be fine too, either way, I think either way it'll be fine. I just know that sometimes when kids are forced to do certain things, they don't, but sometimes you need to force them to try new things too.
Just to clarify, my apologies, they would, music means band and choir.
And or.
And or.
For middle school.
For middle.
I think the and or is probably a pretty significant part of the motion then.
Yeah, and that's what we discussed, it would be and or.
So they could take both or just one of.
Band or chorus or whatever.
Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
None.
Okay, one opposed.
So they're making it a requirement.
Yep.
And if it's a disaster for a year or two, it's very good.
We can always, yep.
Okay.
All right, security camera solutions.
All right, um, I would ask that the board table this, cuz I'm getting, gathering more information regarding this requirement. Cuz there, there's a couple different solutions. One is replacing everything, which is to me a costly waste. I mean, I should say, it's a costly expense. And then there's other options that would utilize our current system. It would just be upgraded to the, the actual system, so.
Okay.
We'll have more information.
We don't have to motion that, do we?
We do.
Okay, we're gonna table it. Uh, softball field repairs? Does that need to be tabled also?
We, we certainly can. I, um, once again, with, with the repairs, it was the light fixtures and the electrical. And determining whether it was going to be buried or overhead. I, I think it's still a wise idea to get security out there. I, I will say that. One thing that we are definitely gonna move forward with is getting a camera system down there cuz we will have additional, uh, outdoor classroom equipment that we wanna get eyes on as well, so. So.
Do we have any costs at all as far as what might cost everything?
Right, no, that's the stuff that, that we have to finalize here, so. And, and part of this is going to be, if, if it's overhead, I think it's gonna be minimal cost, but we get that. The underground, I know we can do it ourselves, but that's gonna cost more simply because of replacing wire. Cuz overhead wire is different than underground, so.
Do you need a motion to keep working on the numbers or just?
No, we can table that and have that for later here as far as numbers are concerned.
Yeah, I'd like to have some numbers, I don't know if anybody else. Okay, we'll table it. Tennis court repairs.
Okay, um, and, and that was, uh, once again, funding the replacement of the, the reel and the nets utilizing Merck's rookie funds.
Okay, do we have any data on if the tennis courts used for tennis?
Yeah, I mean, we don't have data, but the Sierra uses them for FIAD, she teaches. And then we also have quite a few people that come up during the summer and use them. A lot of times we're able to meet with some people out there.
With the discussion I had with this Merk, whole Merk's rookie thing, I would not necessarily take funds from that unless it was brought up. With the discussion I had with this Mer- whole Merz rookie thing, I would not necessarily take funds from that unless it was brought up by cultures.
Yeah, it doesn't really support a sport.
It's not a support, it's not a sport, and that money is specifically for sports. It is, I would.
Well, not tennis courts.
There's been a discussion.
There's been a lot of discussion over the, the years with that.
There, there's more to come with that, so, um, but yeah, I would hold off on the funding it with the Merz rookie for now. So I wouldn't table that until we get that all sorted out and.
Yeah, well, I think we'll move forward with just the purchase and.
Okay.
Cause that, it needs to be done one way or the other, so.
All right, do you know, do we have, it wasn't that much, was it?
No.
Do we need a?
Thousand dollars.
Thousand dollar one, okay. All right, season twelve contracts.
Okay.
Move over this a little bit. Was there something else you were gonna take out of this or?
There, there is not, so. After reviewing this.
So everything where yes is.
Yes, well, it's got the amounts there and then the finalized amount. It's an increase of just under five thousand dollars from this, this year, so.
Yeah.
They get a raise?
They don't raise over the year, yeah. That's why we can't offer as much. It's gonna make control of that one.
All right.
So we didn't, the motion approved that or?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the, uh, season twelve services contract.
Well, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Monthly collaborative teacher time.
Okay.
Approval of additional early release days for collaborative teacher time. This is what, five days a year?
Uh, it came out to a total of six, if I remember correctly. One, two, three, four, five, six, yes.
Five, six days.
Six half-days.
Six half-days, that is correct.
So technically three.
Check.
So where are we at?
We would be, we would look at absorbing five minutes into the day, um, probably at the beginning of the day, and I think we can manage it without increase, I mean, doing a rotation of, of supervision and not increase everyone's time coming in.
So every day, student day will be five minutes, and we'll be able to cover that with staff that.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Look like shit comes in a little bit as the bus drivers, because they need to have the kids here soon enough to, I mean, are they gonna have time for breakfast? Because I know when we put it at this, it's like some of them are pushing for breakfast time.
No, I get it, and that's.
Can we cut their lunch by five minutes?
No, no. And the door is open, yes. We'll have that there, and I'm sure we'll have to work out that piece with transportation, so.
What is the lunch period? How long is that?
Thirty minutes.
This goes out to requirement too.
Not necessarily, but it's, it's more with supervision than anything else. Make sure that we get adequate time for staff to get there at thirty minutes.
Yeah, yeah, but it goes out. Okay, everybody may wanna make a motion to approve the yearly release dates for collaborative teachers.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Right here, any opposed? All right, policy, technical correction, second reading. Can you take action on these, please? That'd be great.
I'll make a motion to approve all the changes on the policies.
And I get a second, all right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And I get a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin stats nineteen point eight five one, see to consider employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise its responsibility.
I'm making a motion.
Check.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are in closed session.
Brad, you should read that whole speech.
What time, Brad?
Uh, five of.
Six fifty-five.
Yeah, six sixty-five.